Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon, I'm Mayor Buddy Dyer and I'd like to welcome you to the St. Patrick's Day meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceeding with the invocation offered today by Chaplain Miguel Vidal of OPD. Chaplain Vidal has served the OPD for three years. He previously served as Chaplain in Clarksville, Tennessee for their police department, the Tennessee State Guard, and the Georgia State Guard. He received the award of commendation given by Chief Rooney for his effort, dedication, and operational excellence in National Night Out in August of 2013. The invocation will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led today by District One Commissioner Jim Gray. Would everyone please join me in standing?
Let us pray. Our dear heavenly Father, we pray that your presence might be in the midst of us at this moment that we are gathered in this very place. We pray for your wisdom and blessings upon our mayor and each one of our council members and their staff that today they gather to discuss and make difficult decisions. Help each one of them to be able to fulfill their commitment to our citizens and to our great city of Orlando that day after day keeps growing and expanding and progressing for the future. We also pray, Father, for your continued divine care over their beloved family members as they leave home to perform their call to duty as a leader of our community. In Christ our Lord we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the good God, of the United States of America, and to the open public, with your strength, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain. Madam Clerk, I'm going to call the meeting into order, and if you would, would you call and make the termination of quorum?
Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Here.
Commissioner Linham?
Here.
Commissioner Ings?
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Consideration of minutes from the second? You don't know what meeting I'm going to do. Okay, from the agenda review and city council meetings of February the 24th, 2014. Who was first? Commissioner Ortiz, did you get it? Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Linham. On favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, so the motion carries. Let's see, Lisa, you are up. Let's move.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and I was going to do a hop, skip, and a jump down here, but I didn't want to fall on my high heels, so. Thank you, Commissioners. Let's move. This campaign was initiated by First Lady Michelle Obama in 2010 to help solve our nation's childhood obesity problem. And as part of the campaign, the National League of Cities and the National Association of Counties has spearheaded "Let's Move Cities, Towns, and Counties" to engage cities and counties in this important work. The campaign has five goals, and they range from increasing children's physical activity to encouraging healthy eating. Orlando has achieved gold medal status in four of the five areas and a bronze medal in the fifth area, and as a result, we are one of only 18 communities throughout the entire country that has been recognized by the National League of Cities for having made the most progress. So I'm going to talk to you about some of the great things that we do as a city to help contribute to solving our nation's and our city's childhood obesity problem. First of all, we give kids safe places to play and be physically active at our 113 city parks that include 47 playgrounds. We have 11 pools. We have 49 basketball courts spread out all over the city, 43 tennis courts spread out all over the city, and at our 15 recreation centers where kids are every day after school and all through the summer, they're doing all kinds of active things. Not only that, but every year, more than 3,000 children participate on city sports leagues. That includes football, cheerleading, basketball, volleyball, baseball, and thousands more kids who don't even enroll in our programs, but they come and play on our ball fields. They play soccer on city ball fields, including 64 to six-year-olds, who are learning to play thanks to Orlando City Soccer at the new soccer corral that opened at the Englewood Neighborhood Center in 2013. And thousands more kids play Little League on our baseball fields all over the city. We even operate a unique dragon boating program in collaboration with the Orlando Police Department. We also do a lot when it comes to helping kids eat healthy. For example, thanks to a weekly nutrition class from a longtime city staff member, Ms. Ruby, at the Englewood Neighborhood Center, 150 after-school youth have learned how to cook and the importance of healthy eating. We also have a long-term partnership with Ebony Nutrition Consultants, who have taught many, many, many kids, not only in our city programs, but throughout the city, how to cook and eat healthy food. And in partnership with Universal Orlando, After-School All-Stars offered nutrition education to almost 2,400 kids in city programs at all the city middle schools in the past year, including food samples from the Universal Orlando Food Truck. I know the mayor went out to that event once. And healthy cooking demonstrations by chefs from Universal Orlando. We also feed thousands of children healthy meals every day through the National Summer Food Service Program. About 4,000 city children eat healthy lunches and snacks every single day, some even eat breakfast, at all 15 city recreation centers throughout the summer and all seven after-school All-Star sites at middle schools. And this past year, for the first time, we began piloting the expansion of our food service program to a year-round after-school program. In fact, we're the first site in the state of Florida to implement after-school feeding for kids. So we now serve after-school meals every single day to about 1,200 city of Orlando children at 17 city locations, and we expect to expand that program to all of our sites by the end of 2014. So, when First Lady Michelle Obama spoke about mayors like Mayor Dyer, who received this award, she said, and I quote her, "Every day, local officials like these, like you all, are changing our children's lives and helping them learn and grow and fulfill every last bit of their potential. We still have a long way to go to solve this problem, but if leaders like these keep coming to the table and we all keep working together, then I am confident that we can give our children the happy, healthy futures they so really deserve." So, here's the award, and I have a bunch of my folks from FPR coming down to take photos, and they're part of this effort, and I want to thank them for all their hard work keeping kids healthy in Orlando. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to call on Dean Grandin, our City Planning Division Manager, for a well-deserved recognition for Paul Lewis, and I would note that a former planning director, Rick Bernhardt, is here with us to enjoy this honor for Paul. Thank you for being here, Rick.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners. Today we celebrate Paul Lewis's 25th anniversary with the city of Orlando. Paul has been proudly serving the city and our community, starting as an intern and becoming a full-time city planner in 1989. Seems like yesterday to me, but it is 25 years ago. As an intern for the city, Paul immediately got to work doing windshield surveys. I don't think they do that today. We use GPS instead. But anyway, he was there to document the existing land uses in the city of Orlando and actually helped create the city's first land use database, which is still actively used today. In fact, if it were not for that database, we wouldn't have the records we have. Paul's spot-on skills in analyzing data and creating growth projections have helped many city departments plan new facilities to accommodate growth in our city over the last 25 years. Today, Paul is the Chief Planning Manager with the City Planning Division. During his tenure, Paul has been responsible for creating and contributing to many crucial projects, including his effort to start the Southeast Orlando Sector Plan in the late 1990s, which has led to the implementation of Medical City and Loryat Park and many other projects down in the southeast. Paul is also coordinator for Baldwin Park and the design review process for Baldwin Park, and more recently, he's taken on the challenge of doing the Paramore Comprehensive Neighborhood Plan, which is a very complex project indeed. Paul holds a master's degree in public administration from the University of Central Florida. Go Knights! He serves as a member of the Planning Advisory Committee to UCF's Master of Urban and Regional Planning Program and has been a mentor to many students and new planners over the years. He's been a mentor to me as too. He is currently working on building and strengthening the Kefan Tieski City Planning Scholarship Fund, which supports students seeking degrees in urban and regional planning from Rollins College and UCF. Through Paul's efforts, we've already raised over $20,000 for that fund. If you stop by Paul's desk, and I offer all of you to do that, you'll learn that Paul is also an avid art collector. He has medieval European city maps, and he also has bobbleheads from our action figures. So Paul has a very diverse eye for collecting items, but his collection enhances many of the walls on the sixth floor of City Hall, and we couldn't do that without his assistance. Outside of work, you may also find Paul riding his bike. He's an avid bike rider, and he also practices music. Paul's skills as a planner are only surpassed by his incredible singing voice and his ability to play musical instruments. For 25 years, Paul's been a mentor and a friend to the planning staff, and we are looking forward to many more years of his wisdom and good-natured humor. To that, I say, congratulations, Paul. Mr. Mayor, if you could come forward, I'd like you to present his certificate and pen.
Okay, so that brings us to the mayor's update, and I would like to invite everyone to join me along with city council for the State of the City address, which will be on Thursday, April the 10th, at 10:30, immediately following the address. I hope you'll stay downtown, have lunch, and visit the Sun Rail Church Street Station from 11:00 to 1:00. People can tour the Sun Rail trains, learn more about the service schedules and operation. For more information, go to cityoforlando.net. A little while later, Christine's going to give this presentation on all things Sun Rail, which will be operational on May the 1st. Earlier today, Commissioner Gray, Commissioner Ings, Commissioner Stewart, and I joined Governor Scott for the announcement of Agile Thoughts' expansion into downtown Orlando. They are a Tampa-based company providing custom software development solutions to a variety of Fortune 500 customers. They are exactly the type of company that we want as we grow national touch and as a tech hub, and we'll be talking a little bit more about what downtown Orlando is going to look like in the next 10 years when Thomas gives us a presentation on DTO this afternoon. I'm excited to announce that for the first time in 10 years, March Madness is back in the city beautiful, and we will host the second and third rounds of the NCAA Men's Basketball Tournament at the World Class Amway Center. This is exactly the type of event we were wanting to be able to bring to Orlando when we embarked upon our Community Venues Initiative back in 2007, and as an added bonus, the University of Florida Fighting Gators will be playing here Thursday afternoon. Lew Gardens has been selected for the Hartier Park as part of Macy's Secret Garden Campaign, which aims to raise awareness and dollars for local parks. For March the 7th through the 31st, customers at Macy's Fashion Square Mall Store can donate money, a dollar or more, at the register, and 100% of the donations will benefit Lew Gardens, and Macy's will match up to $250,000, all contributions made by customers. Just a few items of note on the agenda. On today's agenda is a grant application for $30,000 to allow us to purchase more smoke detectors. OFD goes out into neighborhoods and gives out, well, does inspections, and then gives out free smoke detectors and installs them for homes for people that are unable to afford them. The city of Orlando Police Department has been awarded a $100,000 grant from FDOT to complement its efforts through best-foot-forward targeting pedestrians and bicycle safety. OPD will utilize the grant fund to do enforcement activities to remind and educate pedestrians and bicyclists and motorists for safe behaviors. And then finally, in advance of the Sun Rail opening on May the 1st, I wanted Christine to update you, update us, on all things Sun Rail and how it's going to be rolled out.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners.
So, 44 days. Sun Rail Phase 1 will be operational. You would have thought Paul Lewis probably started working on this project his first day at the city. It seems like we've been working on bringing passenger rail to central Florida for a very long time. So, we've indeed been working on the railroad. Sun Rail, like I said, will be operational on May 1st, but there's going to be a whole lot of activities between now and then, so we kind of wanted to capitalize it a little bit for you. You'll probably hear a lot of events coming online. I think Heather Fagan sent you an email last week about a lot of events coming up, so we wanted to put it in context for you. So, all the double-tracking is done. They've put in new signals, and I know we get a lot of questions along the way about quiet zones. We'll know that these signals become a tremendous foundation to ultimately get to the Quiet Zone project for central Florida. The platforms are built, so they're about 97% complete, but we always know that last 5% sometimes is a challenge, but we'll get it done. So, you've seen the Sun Rail vehicle going up and down the corridor. It's because they need to burn in the vehicles. Each one of the locomotives and cab cars need to have a certain amount of hours to be safety-tested by the Federal Railroad Administration, and they are beautiful vehicles. It's so nice to hear the feedback from citizens as they see our Sun Rail vehicles. So that testing, everything is underway. I know a lot of people are anxious to get on the trains while it's moving. There is some federal requirements necessary for the testing of all these for Sun Rail to get a safety clearance before folks can get on, but they sure do look nice. So let's talk about the four stations in the city of Orlando, starting with Florida Hospital. All the stations are about 90%, 90 to 95% complete. You're going to start seeing all the station finishes coming online here in the next couple weeks. But in addition to the stations themselves, it's the vision of Sun Rail and what it would do for our community. So let's talk some numbers. Last time I was addressing you all, we were talking about transit-oriented development in central Florida. Since Sun Rail has come online, we have $700 million worth of projects currently under construction along our four stations, and another 640 that have either been announced or are pending. So this reinforces the importance of why we invested while you all invested, while you all have supported this project every step of the way, because it's truly transformational. So here's Florida Hospital, our great partners there in expanding that station, really an employee-based type station. There might be some folks from College Park heading that way to hop on Sun Rail. Link Central Station, like, draw your attention to the wavy fence there on the foreground of the picture. It balances out the wave of the building of the Sun Rail. On the right-hand side of your screen, that's the dirt that's there for Central Station, Crescent, that turned dirt a couple weeks ago. Once again, transit-oriented development on its way. Church Street Station, one of the projects that we really had to look at the historic nature of Church Street Station, and so the idea there is that the station fade in and blend with the existing architecture and not necessarily stand out and be independent. And here's Orlando Health, Amtrak. Here they echoed the arches of the Amtrak station and some decorative lighting down there. So, let's talk about the fixtures, what it all looks like. So this is what the ticket vending machines will look like. These will start getting installed at the Sun Rail stations. Folks will begin to start, you can purchase passes, and we'll talk about this in a minute. To the right, you'll see a little, outside the kiosk, to the far right of that, that is a tap-on, tap-off technology. These are, they have stored value on these cards. It's like a stored debit card, credit card, that you can go and constantly load online. So when you tap on it, it knows geographically where you're getting on and tap off when you get off the train, because at the end of the day, they're going to charge you based on the length of travel, number of counties that you've traversed. So the base rate for Sun Rail will be $2.50 if you stay within the county, and each time you cross a county line, it will be an additional dollar. So, for example, someone gets on at Sanford and gets off in downtown Orlando, that's $3.50. Free transfers on the links, Votran if you're starting off in Volusia County. But more importantly, there's tremendous deep discounts for people who will purchase seven, 30-day, and annual fare passes. So for, if you're doing that same trip, round trip, every day, weekly, that deep discount goes from $3.50 a day, now for a weekly pass, that's $25. If you do the same thing for a month, it would be $84, and annually, that's $840. So it really, the deep discounts provide for an opportunity for folks to really save money. I know that we've got some employees at the city of Orlando that are eager for Sun Rail to open. So how are we getting the word out? Well, FDOT is fully responsible for the marketing plan. We're assisting whenever possible. Kathy DeValt is here in the audience. Reaching out to our community, we have an excellent relationship with the downtown businesses, the citizen base in the city of Orlando, so we're helping as much as possible. Has anyone seen that commercial? G6? Cheese sticks? Yeah. It took my 11-year-old to explain to me actually what that commercial was about, and it's a G6, I guess. Whether you like it or not, what's amazing is that it went from the Sun Rail website getting 900 hits per week to 27 hits per day after that commercial ran. Okay, the first thing they do, people want to see that crazy commercial all over again, but they're staying longer. Once they hit that commercial, then they go look at the route. Where's Sun Rail going? Where does it ultimately get them? Then they want to know about the fare, and then they dig a little deeper and find out about the station, that they may be their origin or their destination. So whether you like it or not, it is doing its job and driving people to the website. The good news is that there are two other commercials that will be coming online, one, I think, later this week. The outreach has been both in Spanish and English, and Luis Martinez, in Mayor Dyer's office, really forced the conversation and got folks to say, "We don't need for Phase 2 to go to Osceola County before we really need to make sure that we're reaching out to the Hispanic-speaking community." So he has done so much to drive that conversation so that all of the print material, their website, as well as the ticket vending machine, will be in Spanish as well as English. So that's been a phenomenal effort that he has made. The digital, online, radio, print, they will all be in Spanish as well as English, and you've seen this billboard up and down I-4 likely, whether it's OBT, Longwood, Fairbanks Service is literally right around the corner. Okay, so what else have they been doing on the Sun Rail marketing business development? They have sold over 10,000 of these passes already. Put it in context, we expect operating 4,000 passengers per day. So they've now sold two and a half times more of these passes than what they expect operating. And we have to thank our downtown businesses for really embracing Sun Rail and being early adopters of this. There are another 2,300 that are pending and invoicing. The Sun Rail team has been in our downtown towers, they're going to continue to be out in the towers, talking to people, you know, "Do you want to park in the parking garage, whatever you're paying per month, or do you want to look at Sun Rail as an option?" And so you see an opportunity for other downtown, opportunities where people can purchase these cards for all the businesses downtown. In addition, Sun Rail is going out and meeting with folks and saying, "How can we customize? How can we help get your employees onto Sun Rail?", whether it's just talking to them about where Sun Rail goes, where it starts and ends. And Florida Hospital's always been a great partner in the Sun Rail project. They've been with us from day one in support of Sun Rail with the governor. They've truly looked at transit-oriented development for their campus. Orlando Health has done the same thing. Rollins College, early adopter of the project as well. As the city of Orlando, we're putting our money where our mouth is. So we're announcing that Sun Rail, the city of Orlando, is embracing a 50% discount for city employees. This is a reimbursement. We've always done it for links. Many people don't know that, but we're doing it for Sun Rail as well. There's been a lot of information on the city's website, on Team Link, about this. The outreach starts next Monday. The transportation team, Emily, I don't know if she's here right now, their whole team is getting folks to understand where Sun Rail's going, how you can use it to get to work, how we can address the last mile, which I'll talk about in a minute. So these cards cost $5 to start with. There's no way of getting around it. So the city has purchased 200 of these cards, and employees will be able to, like I said, load these with a monthly pass and then get reimbursed 50% through, as a city benefit, which is just excellent. So great opportunities there. So, people want to tour the train. It's going to be in Winter Park this weekend for the Art Festival, but when it comes to the city of Orlando, we really wanted to attract the folks that may use it. So it's starting off at Florida Hospital on April 3rd, 6:30 in the morning. That's to really attract the shift workers there. You're welcome to go. Link Central Station, they're doing a fun event. They're doing food trucks in the lunch hour to share, talk about it. Orlando Health, also shift working. And then Church Street Station, Mayor Dyer mentioned the state of downtown. We're going to, state of the city, sorry. We're going to coincide the Sun Rail event with the state of downtown. The state of the city, sorry. Free Sun Rail, riding it for free. Once again, we don't want people on day one to get to the station and say, "How does this work?" We want to do all that we can to encourage people's understanding of that early. So it looks like, assuming that safety clearance that we talked about, Sun Rail's going to be running for free up and down the corridor. There's going to be specific times in which it runs. I've provided a schedule for you, for each of you, northbound and southbound for Sun Rail. Keep in mind, they operate every 30 minutes in the morning peak and the p.m. peak and some midday service, but I think even after this got published, a lot of us were pleased to see that the last train leaving Church Street northbound is 9:24 in the evening. So that really does expand that opportunity for people to work and play downtown before they head home to whatever direction. All right, so the big grand opening. You all should have gotten "Save the Date" a couple weeks ago, the formal The formal invite will arrive on April 3. It's important that anyone that you talk to, this is an event that's open to everyone. We are truly celebrating Sun Rail opening. It is, it's a whistle-stop tour. So it's going to start up in DeBarry, the first station to the north, and it's going to open each station, about five minutes at each station, and culminate down at Sand Lake Road with a big festival and so forth. So, once again, Heather and Kathy will get with each of you to find out what level of participation you'd like. Do you want to meet everyone at Sand Lake? Do you want to hit one of the stations as the train progresses along the way? So, what about that last mile? For the City of Orlando, I think that's a lot of people's concerns, like up in Lake Mary and so forth. But here in the City of Orlando, you all have done so much to prepare for Sun Rail, whether it's transit-oriented development, our limo expansion, as well as the Lynx routes, half of our routes go through Lynx Central Station, so we have great connectivity. We also, City Orlando Moves Communications created this for us a few weeks ago. But it's a great snapshot of how we can connect, whether it's car share, bike share, all these other programs that you all have been approving along the way, to see it in composition with Sun Rail and how it will ultimately create a very successful system. So, I cannot leave without first mentioning safety. What's been amazing is the Sun Rail team has told me, the vehicles are faster and they're a lot quieter. And there are a lot of people walking in the corridor with headsets on, talking on the telephone. We need to be very, very careful of the corridor and protect the pedestrians that are around. So any opportunity you have to talk about safety as well would be greatly appreciated. So what's next? Last week, the President announced $63 million for Phase Two of Sun Rail. That is tremendous. That's 72% of the overall funding that we need from the federal government for Phase Two. We worked hard, you know, we would have been happy with $5 million just to get us into the President's budget. So this is a resounding letter of support for this project. They are almost done with all the ride-of-way acquisition for the stations and so forth. It will be operational in 2016. But what's critical to Phase Two South is, we need that to be in place before we can ever get Sun Rail to the airport, which, that action makes Sun Rail to the airport a real possibility in the near future. But we also have Phase Two North, and that's DeBarry, getting it into downtown Deland, getting that final station of the 61-mile system. But that's underway, it goes through a different federal process, but definitely underway. There's a lot of information here. One of the, you can get all kinds of great pictures on Sun Rail and so forth, but Kathy told me on Friday that today, cityoforlando.net/sunrail is the main page where you can get all city-related Sun Rail activities. So you can tell your constituents, you can go to that one spot and get all the information you need. And Kathy and Heather will be following up with you about your engagement in all these future activities. So that completes my presentation.
Questions for Christine or comments, anybody? Commissioner Linehan?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thanks, Christine. This was a great report. I have so many calls from my friends and constituents, because I refer to Sun Rail as a she, as a her, it's a lady.
What's beautiful is-
I haven't seen a man walk around with a white dress on like that. So, they're saying, "Daisy, I saw your train, I saw the train." I said, "No, you didn't." "Oh, yeah, I was there when this big white train comes past." That is so beautiful. People are so excited about Sun Rail. And I think it puts them in a place where, back in '99, when we were really working hard here in the city for Light Rail. And I tried to impress upon them, "This is not Light Rail. It is Sun Rail, it's a commuter train." But I think with all this great news, our future is assured for rail in central Florida. Getting this one off the ground, getting all the alignments taken care of, everything out of the way, and I believe Light Rail will be on the horizon. But more importantly, always important, when we learned this, something was in the budget, President's budget, we kind of believed it would be, right, Mayor? There was no way Secretary of Transportation was going to come down here and not do something great. It was a real dad day for me, I was in California, I was so sad. But when Secretary Fox came, and then when we got the word, I received a phone call about it, but to get the amount we did, literally puts the whole project, I believe, just forward. Everything is leaning forward, and I am one happy camper for the community. It's good for our community, it ties this region together like never, ever before, and I think we all ought to be proud of ourselves and give our whole constituency and the region an applause for all the hard work. So Mayor Dyer, thank you, coming on and pushing this agenda, and all of our great staff and all of those from Metro Plan and everywhere else, these engineering firms, there's a lot of people doing this. And FDOT, you know, has not always been my favorite agency, but I have to admit, Norrie Anne has done a great job in our district, and I think the new secretary has done a great job for Florida. So I think we're going to get this done, we're going to get our trails and our gaps done. We're going to just be on the move here for the next few years or so. Congratulations to each of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner? Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question, and thank you for the presentation, thank you for your remarks about the Hispanic community. But there's three other communities that I'm a little concerned about, Haitian, Brazilian, or, you know, Portuguese language, and Vietnamese. Are we doing anything to make sure that we cover everybody?
Not in the written word. They're using universal icons, keeping in mind that it is truly a commuter rail project. So the idea is that people are used to getting on at Point A and getting off at Point B five days a week, only because they're challenged with the limitations of getting this information out. As the demand rises, I'm certain that FDOT will respond in kind with getting information out. But they first and foremost want to use international symbols.
My main concern is the elderly people. Because younger people come here, they learn the languages pretty quick, but elderly people is a little tougher for them. So I was wondering if we are approaching these communities and explaining to them, even with translators or whatnot.
Right. We will continue to work with them, and they have been an excellent partner to work through. And as soon as they heard from the city's team, a real push to get Spanish more integrated into the entire system, they were quick to respond in kind.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rains?
Thank you, Mayor. Christine, thank you for that great report and presentation, so it looked very good. The train itself, does it have a double-decker feature to it?
It does. It's quite nice. So the first floor, and it's all ADA compliant, that becomes a question for folks. There are no restrooms at the stations, they're on the train, also ADA compliant. So you enter level, you enter onto the lower level, and that's where you can store bicycles, you can take bikes on. That is where people in wheelchairs would stay on the first floor. Then you go up the stairs on either end of the cab car and then back up again, and it's a beautiful, it really is pretty inside. Places to sit down, you can plug in, literally, there's free Wi-Fi throughout the system. They actually use two providers to make sure that no one gets dropped along the route on whatever they're working on. So it is double-decker, and it's very nice from the upper deck. I've not ridden it, I've just seen inside, but it's quite beautiful, too.
And for the grand opening itself for Sun Rail, you know, it would be nice, Mayor, if we as the council were to start off in Deland and just come on every stop until we get to Orlando. So is it possible to ride the train that way?
It is possible. The challenge with that is that you can't get off again until you get to Sand Lake Road. So if you really want to celebrate the city's stations, you need to start at one of the city's stations. So, and that's what Heather and Kathy will talk to you about.
Okay.
Commissioner, we're not exactly in charge of-
That's right.
But we kind of envision that our commissioners and other commissioners from Winter Park or Seminole County would get on the train in one of the stations in their jurisdiction. So maybe at Church Street, or maybe at Sly or Lynx Central Station.
Well, somebody told me that you were the great Mayor Buddy Dyer, so I know you can do all things, and this might be one of them.
Wherever you want to get on, you can get on.
That's right. You're welcome to ride the entire-
Commissioner Sheehan?
Yeah, Christine, the good presentation, the feedback that I'm getting from my constituents is a concern about nights and weekends, because they want to go take it to the Winter Park Art Festival. And I understand that the FDOT funding is because of the concern with the I-4 construction, that's why they're doing a lot of, you know, funding a lot of it. And I actually have gone through I-4 construction, back when I was in my 20s, I was a Deltona resident. And there were times it would take me up to five hours to get downtown, it was horrible. So people will be riding this to avoid those horrible backups, I can tell you that. But, you know, but that doesn't really solve the, you know, a lot of the people are downtown, they've solved their transportation problem, they live here. But, you know, they might want to go to a festival, they may want to go to, you know, or, we've also done transit-oriented design, you know, not putting as much parking, performing arts center, different things like that. How are we going to, you know, if they can't get here from elsewhere, how are we, how are we going to do that?
Well, that's a great question. And it's, and the start of Sun Rail is the start of a conversation. The beauty of what FDOT did in purchasing the 61-mile corridor and the double-tracking that they did, they created an envelope where they can actually, all they have to do is add trains to get to 15-minute service, which is Uber, Uber commuter rail. So then you start talking about, how long is that window of service for, it's no longer commuter rail at that point, I think, it's just passenger rail. FDOT has said that they are going to fund operations for the first seven years of Sun Rail. So they're taking that on 100% because they want to fund kind of when the most congestion occurs on I-4. So that's, that is what brings them to the table, and we do appreciate it. There is always the opportunity, if the community decides, and the local elected officials along the corridor say, "We want more service, we want longer service, we want weakened service." There is an opportunity to grow, and Mayor Dyer and I have talked regularly, if you service the airport, people go to the airport more than just morning and evening peak, Monday through Friday. So it all becomes a larger conversation that I think FDOT is willing to have when the time is right. But with that conversation needs to come local responsibility financially.
So does that mean we are going to have to fund that, then?
To a certain extent, yes. That becomes part of that conversation. Now remember, after seven years, all the locals do fund Sun Rail, 100%. So you also don't want to increase something that you ultimately can't fund and sustain. But I think we've talked that there were very, very conservative estimates on ridership for Sun Rail for day one. Out to year 2040, I think you're going to far exceed it. And once that happens, that Fairbox revenue starts generating a whole lot more as a percent of the overall operating cost. So I think it's a great conversation to have in the future.
So as a for instance, though, say, there's a lot of Magic fans that are living in Seminole County, and they're going to be dealing with I-4 congestion, you know, construction, too, even on the weekends when they want to come to a game. So if we as a local government have to provide the service, if they're going to get here to come to a game, do we get to keep the revenue from those tickets from that time?
Well, it's interesting that you would highlight the Orlando Magic, because they are one of the partners in all of this, who have said, "We'd be willing to help fund additional service." Now that's a conversation between the Magic and FDOT, but that conversation is underway. And they're also looking at, instead of, for our season ticket holders, would you be willing to get a Sun Rail pass instead? So they've been invested in day, from day one, in this conversation. But the Winter Park Art Festival, always on a weekend, Winter Park may be the city to say, "I want to get some service on the weekend for this." So the opportunities are there, it's just figuring out who's going to be financially responsible for those opportunities.
But we get to reimburse, what I'm asking is, is there any way for, so in other words, they'll still get to use their Sun Rail pass, but we'll have to pay for the service, and then they'll still get to keep the funding?
Well, probably what would happen is, that whatever the delta is, what Fairbox isn't covering and what other infused revenues aren't covering, you would get charged the delta. I would say that FDOT's been a very good partner in all this, and would look to just whatever that necessary subsidy would be to operate it on the weekend. That's for a conversation another day, you know?
Well, that's a conversation people are wanting to have now.
Oh, absolutely. And that will be a wonderful problem to have in the near future, I think.
May I respond to this also? Because transit doesn't make enough money to give anybody anything back. When she says "our share," it's our offsetting some of the costs for people to come in, or the Magic, or whoever. But the Fairbox is only a small percentage of what's necessary to keep it moving. And so consequently, whatever we do to offset something, or the Magic, or the hospitals, or whoever else, is just a part of making it operational, not for any return on the dollar. But the return on our dollars come by the people coming into the city, spending their money, or going to the games for the Magic, or going to the hospital, or doing whatever else. But there is no refund. Thank you.
Right, it's, the Fairbox will offset the operational cost, there'll be something left over after that. But Commissioner Sheehan, I do think that, once we're operational, and I think it's going to be wildly successful and will exceed the ridership estimates that are very conservative by nature to begin with, but there's going to be opportunities to expand service for sure. Commissioner Stewart?
Let me follow up on that, I've got a couple of questions. But what is the timeframe for looking at that? Is that, are we looking at 90 days? And I mean, what, have we, has somebody kind of talked about where we are in terms of addressing that? Because the ideas of special events, the ideas of weekend schedule, the idea of advancing to a 15-minute lead time, those are all things, I think, that are opportunities for us to see a significant part of increased ridership. And I've had the same kind of comments of, "Look, it's every two hours during the daytime, why in the world would I, if I got to go home at noon time, and I have to wait an hour and a half to get to a train to go home, why wouldn't I just drive my car down?" I think their opinion will change in December, when they start working on I-4. But that won't stop them from having that discussion between now and December.
Exactly. And like I mentioned, the Magic have already started that conversation, so if you look at their games as an opportunity to, what does customized service look like? I think for the most part, we want to see, you really need to hook on to Phase Two, also to get the whole magnitude of the ridership. Actually, a high percentage of ridership comes out of Phase Two, because they're nowhere near I-4, you know? There's no predictable travel that you can get from Kissimmee or Point Sienna into downtown. So that ridership's actually higher coming out of the South. I think FDOT, I think we all remember Secretary Prasad coming in here and reminding us what you all have committed to, and making sure that that's what you want. I think we're all eager to see a wildly successful system. I think getting to 15-minute headways, that once again is something that would need to be driven by the local communities. I think you want to see what that ridership and demand looks like. And you're right, once I-4, I mean, they're not just widening I-4, they're changing the horizontal. I mean, it's going to be tough. It's going to be very tough. I think people are going to be jumping onto Sun Rail sooner or, or buying more houses in downtown, which we appreciate.
Well, the fear I have is that if we don't anticipate that in October, what we're likely to be is, be central seven months into I-4, major renovations, and now all of a sudden, we're at a position where we have no other choice, and if there's additional cost to offset that, we aren't in the position of negotiating. So I guess I'm looking at process. I mean, there ought to be some type of process. The, what comes to mind, some of the thoughts that you wrote was, I mean, I don't know what the weekend schedule is at all.
None.
Okay, all right, so that becomes a concern. I mean, my first thought is, there probably ought to be a weekend schedule, even if it's every two hours. The second is special events, and I think that ought to be borne by the cost of whoever wants to cover that, which is okay, I mean, that's all right. But there's a process for doing that. The other thing that comes to mind, that's just offhand, is the additional trains on the tracks. I know we're hearing a lot of whistles nowadays, and apparently I'm just a little bit more attentive to them now than I were before, thinking, as I was before, thinking that, "I'm not going to hear that very soon." I was listening this morning during the press conference, and there were two train whistles coming through, and I'm thinking, "Gosh, it would be good not to hear those sometime in the future." So tell me about the additional freight, when do they go off? And I think it's only five trains a day that'll be allowed on the line.
Right, they should already be on limited freight service, so that midday, you know, we have reduced commuter rail service during that time, that opens up the window for some freight movement, and some freight movement later in the evening. And then, and then everything's supposed to be pushed out into the nighttime. You still have two Amtrak, southbound, two Amtrak, northbound, every day as well. So you're not going to eliminate it, because at the end of the day, we're- So you're not going to eliminate it, because at the end of the day, we're, freight is servicing our businesses in Central Florida as well. So most are being pushed, the coal train in particular, out to the S-line instead of using the, the A-line. I think at the end of the day, we all want for that quality of life enhancement of quiet zones, because the horns have to blow because it keeps the corridor safe. So I think that there's already, we're looking at, we just, Metroplan Orlando just presented the, the quiet zone analysis and for, I think, the 20-plus crossings in Orlando, that's around a $5 million price tag if you fix all of them or change all of them, increase the safety. There's an analysis you can do and really limit that investment. I know that your transportation team is already looking at opportunities to do that. We had to wait until Sun Rail was operational before we could get in and do that construction. I agree with you, quiet zones, it makes a difference for our hotels downtown, the businesses downtown, as well as our residential units. And so I think that that's something that will come online sooner rather than later, but it will probably be at least a two-year window before that is all complete to manage expectations.
Well, I just know, I mean, I was sort of looking at this weekend, and the conversation was, you know, "I can't believe you're gonna keep those trains. I was there for three or four or five minutes, and I can't believe you guys are gonna keep doing that." And I was like, wait, 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 wait. So after about two or three minutes of having to describe what you actually saw and describe what time, I had to come back and say, "Well, that, that train's not gonna be there."
Right.
Yeah. And so you're, this won't happen again to you. And then the, the idea of the commuter train coming through is about the stop of a traffic signal. So it's, it ends up being a little bit different kind of concept in terms of what people have. I guess the problem is that there's a lot of question out there that I think will be, will be addressed sometime as it gets operational. I just want to make sure that we're aggressively doing all we can up front from the same standpoint.
It's something very new to this entire community, and that's why we're doing an extended rollout of all of this, hoping that people will embrace it along the way. One advantage to Amtrak and CSX, they have to pay every time they use the track, so they're paying to help offset the operations of Sun Rail. So there is an advantage sometimes to all that happening, and they're providing service to the businesses in Orlando.
Two other quick things. A debit card you talked about, I guess there's really two types of debit cards. One is kind of a, a period type where you have a discount rate, and then there's also kind of an open card. Is that right?
Yeah. So they're both stored value. So you can, however you use it, so you can designate whether or not you want month-to-month, you want to buy a monthly pass. And so it does not activate until the first time you tap it on. Then that, that 30-day calendar starts to hit. Okay? And then you can also buy single use at that $2.50 base.
You mentioned before, you can buy and just have an amount of credit on one card and use it unlimited.
Right.
But there's no discount apparently in acquiring that, just discounted is for the period of time.
Absolutely.
And Lance is, which I think is, I'm, I'm missing, is iPhone app, Android app?
Oh, no, they're there. I'm sorry. I just didn't mention it. So that connectivity for folks who want to know how they're gonna get from point A to point B, and Sun Rail's not gonna take them 100%. You can do a trip planner on both links as well as Sun Rail, and it will help you figure out that last mile, whether it's at the origin side of your trip or the destination. Reinforcing that the City of Orlando does not have Sun Rail dedicated free parking at any of our stops, nor does Winter Park, because we're considered destination stations. But for others, they still estimate, I think, around 20 to 30% of the riders of Sun Rail to come on bus, some sort of transit connectivity, but there's going to be quite a bit of parking for the suburban stations.
I think when you, when you're looking at a two-hour window downtown, it'd be nice to be able to have some type of half-hour alarm that says, "I got a half hour to get to the station."
Absolutely. And then one other thing I did not mention is rethink also a division within FDOT. They're helping people figure out, if you do commit to taking Sun Rail, you can register with them and four times a month get a guaranteed ride home. So if a child gets sick, you have to stay late, they will reimburse you 100% for a taxi cab, whatever, but you have to pre-register to get that benefit.
That's cool.
It's nice to have.
Well, thank you. Great job.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Stewart brought up a few points that made me think about some other things. How many crossings do we have in the City of Orlando that are gonna be, are gonna be affected by this, by the, I'm, I'm sorry, by the train?
Well, they're all 100% affected.
Well, you're right. But how many crossings do we have? I'm sorry.
I, I have that number exactly. If you give me just a second, I pulled that right before I came down. I think it's in the 26 crossings.
26 crossings.
And four have already been addressed as part of Florida Hospital's investment. But once again, you need to think about what our neighbors are doing as well, because the horn needs to blow across, as you approach any of the crossings.
Yeah. How, what's the time span every time one, one, once a train comes, I mean, comes through the crossing? How, how long it's gonna take?
I think it's less than 30 seconds between the gates coming down and passing through, and then the gates going back.
Have we done a study about how this is gonna be affecting, in addition to Amtrak, our traffic on a daily basis?
Yes, that was part, they modeled all of that early on in the process and looked at the signal timing for oncoming traffic along the way. But once again, it gets back to safety. This is new to our entire community. These trains are coming every half hour, so you have to assume every 15 minutes, because one's going southbound, one's going northbound. So as a community, we really need to be aware and, and the safety of these crossings is important.
Putting safety aside, which is very, the most important thing, I'm also concerned about traffic jams. How is this gonna reflect?
Well, we have a great traffic monitoring group with Charles and his team, and, and we have demand response, traffic signals in a lot of our areas. But this has been modeled, and they're monitoring every day how this is being affected. And that's part of why you see the trains running now. If, if there were a true problem, you would have noticed it already, because they're running on schedule already.
Which is every how many?
Half hour in the AM and P.
Every half hour?
Mm-hmm. That's, you know, they're, they're burning in their time right now to, to really see how it affects the region.
Okay. Thank you, Christine. Thank you. Awesome.
So this is the last meeting before Christine will be accepting a wonderful new career challenge, and I want to thank you for the time you've spent here at the City of Orlando. You've done a tremendous job.
Thank you.
Had an opportunity to work with Christine pretty much on a daily basis, and she is gonna be very much missed in our transportation area. She has shepherded everything transportation for the last number of years. Christine, thank you for your service, and you will certainly be missed, but it's a wonderful opportunity, and I wish you well.
It's been my pleasure. Thank you.
I didn't see, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sheehan had one more question.
Oh, that's okay. I can just attest that they've been running a half, every half hour, because when I do my run on the urban trail every morning, I'm seeing the trains every, every half hour, so they're running on time.
Okay.
I have to be careful, make sure I get, I get past there before they come through.
All right. So that concludes the mayor's update, and we're gonna move to consent agenda. And consent agenda is a number of items that are acted on through a single vote of council. We give each of our council members an opportunity to comment on items that are on the consent agenda and/or update you on important happenings in their district. We rotate the order in which they go, and Commissioner Ray, you are first up today.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be very brief. A couple of kudos for staff. Last week, we held three community meetings throughout District 1, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday evening. And from my team, Jeannie Wilson and Edgar Malave, along with Susan Harris and Cindy Light from Neighborhood Relations, were a big help, and I just want to publicly acknowledge their efforts. And also one of the agenda items, C-22, which is an interlocal agreement with Orange County on a Southeastern Oaks annexation. Wanted to thank our team, starting with Byron and, and certainly Brooke and Dean and FJ for negotiating this agreement. It took a lot of effort, and they deserve some kudos for that. So along with the landowner who was patient while we worked that out. So I just wanted to publicly thank them, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District 2. Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. And I have to concur with Commissioner Ray. We have the best staff in the world. You guys are always on top of things, so I really appreciate your efforts. Let's see. February 26th, Mrs. Georgina Pinedo Colon was sworn in as the new president of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of Metro Orlando. She is a good friend, and she, I want to take this opportunity to congratulate her. She also happens to be the wife of Captain Rolon, so, but she is making him shine. You see how, how that works, Chief? Just kidding. They're a great, great couple, and they do a lot for our community. On March 8th, I attended the memorial service of Mr. Bill Mendoza. Mr. Mendoza was a volunteer with the Serious Versus Crime Program, which is the only one we have in Orange County. And so he was a good friend, and, and we really are gonna miss him. He was really involved with the community. My condolences to his family. They're in our prayers. I want to congratulate Ms. Jodi Bujas from Keep Orlando Beautiful and her team for a great cleanup event last Saturday at La Costa Wetlands. They're really looking good. Summer Business Partnership approached me about us doing a arts and craft festival over there, which I think would be a great idea. But I was also thinking, Mayor, and I, I'd like to talk to the staff about also trying to get a, some sort of market program over there, what we call the, like what we have at Lake Hill, the farmer's market. Thank you. Farmer's market over there. Maybe a great place to conduct, to do something like this on a regular basis. So once again, thanks a lot for all of them, and let me not forget, SeaWorld team, they came over, employees volunteered, and we had a great time. One of our ladies, I believe her name was Jessica, got stuck in the mud. Our fathers had to come over and help her out. And that was, it was not fun. It was, it was actually sad, but she was quite a trooper, so I just want to make sure that if she's watching, she knows that she did a great job, and we are very grateful. And this last Saturday, the mural of Roberto Clemente was repainted at the Azalea Park Little League fields. There was an act of vandalism that was committed, perpetrated about a month ago, which we are still to find out who, who did it. But I want to congratulate the Azalea Park Little League, especially Mr. Earl Lugo and Mr. Nice, Nicer Nazaria, which is a painter. He came back from New York to paint this mural. And their diligence and leadership was great. And, and something that really impressed a heck out of me was the fact that this time around, the community really came together. I want to thank the sponsors, people that contributed financially. More so, the people that came up to attend the event. We had representation from all over the city and other public officials, and, and I was really happy to see so many people. I just want to make sure that people don't just come over for this particular event. They keep on coming and keep supporting this Azalea Park Little League. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Move to District 3. Commissioner Roberts.
Thank you. Let me share, Happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody. Today, everybody gets to be Irish, so I'm excited about that. The, a couple of things I want to mention briefly that were very important. And one is, this past weekend was the Lou Gardens Plant Sale. Robert did a great job. Thank you, Mr. Bowden, for everything you've done. And how many came through, do we think?
10,000.
How many?
10,000.
10,000. I went on Saturday, and it was just great. And thank you for your leadership, as always. Wonderful core volunteers, wonderful core staff over there. And it was another great sale and a great exposure to one of our jewels of our city. Let me also thank Orlando Police Department and, and our community liaison officers together. We continue to work slowly down through Operation Lock It Up. We've done now, I guess, five or six of these small operations where we are going and walking and canvassing the neighborhood and encouraging them to lock their vehicles and lock their houses. We have found in the, I guess, probably five locations, roughly 79 vehicles that were unlocked in the middle of the day. And so now that we've gotten kind of this under our belt, trying to figure out what we need, we are beginning to try to expand to all the, all the districts. So, so we wanted to test it in a couple of places, and, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the help of all of the, of liaison officers for helping to step up and do that. So thank you for, to Corporal Kirkpatrick for the work that you've done, and thank you for our entire staff of OPD. We're gonna make our community safer, and this is one way that we can do that. Congratulations to Harbor House for the Walk a Mile in Her Shoes. They raised $20,000, I think was the last count I heard, and I had a chance to be part of the co-sponsor, co-host with Commissioner Scott Boyd, and, and had a chance to wear my niece's shoes. Man, couldn't go very far. It was just, man, I loved it, but it was just, it was a wonderful time out there with a bunch of people who really care about how to stop in domestic violence. Couple of things coming up real quickly. The Audubon Park Garden District is doing a Make-Up Your Own Holiday Sip and Stroll, so you can wear whatever holiday decoration you'd like to wear. It's kind of a little fun, little fundraiser for them. And then this, this next Saturday at 11 o'clock, the Affordable Healthcare Open Enrollment Event is over at Rosemont, and we're one of those locations. We're looking forward to having that there. On the agenda, a couple of quick things. Mayor, thank you for mentioning the Smoke Alarm Grant. That is very important to, to many of our senior citizens especially, and those who don't have a chance to have access to none of those things. And also, you mentioned about the, the grant for $100,000 for the pedestrian and bicycle safety. That's also very important. Let me also mention on H-5, the school resource officers for all of our community. We have a little bit more money than we did in the past years, but it's, I've got a list of all the schools, and when you go down that list, you understand the importance of what our police department does in our local schools and so. And with that, I'm gonna close with telling Paul Lewis, "Congratulations for 25 great years." We appreciate the work that he's done and the leadership over there that he's provided, so that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Move to District 4. Commissioner Sheehan?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and I'd like to wish everybody a Happy St. Patty's Day as well. I wish, gee, I wish I was Irish. I am, very much. Peter Robinson Settlement, all the way to the 1700s, which we trace my folks back to. So it's kind of cool when there was no, no horse thieves in the family. I was very happy to find that out. So luckily Irish to all of you, and Happy St. Patty's Day. And I do have some concerns, though, not on the agenda today, but I've had some, I had some parents come in from Fern Creek Elementary School. And, you know, Fern Creek, you know, when we, when we did the desegregation order, a lot of the kids from Paramore actually came over and were educated at Fern Creek Elementary School. And it was unfortunate at the time, the 1960s, there was this white flight that happened in the neighborhood, and, and people didn't want to send their children to Fern Creek, and I think it was disgusting. But this neighborhood, little neighborhood Colonial Town, has, has really, since then, rallied around Fern Creek Elementary School and gotten a mentorship program, really rallied around these kids and helped them and sent them food home, and it's, it's a wonderful school. It's a wonderful neighborhood school. And now, it's, it's, you know, an unintended consequence of the desegregation, segregation that we're doing for the, the Paramore K through 8, is that it's gonna displace 150 of the students at Fern Creek. Well, and they're gonna go back to the neighborhood, which is fine, but there's 200 children remaining from the neighborhood that now they're talking about putting into an Audubon K through 8, where there's not even capacity yet. They want to use sales tax funding to take the Fern Creek kids out of their neighborhood school now and move them into an Audubon K through 8, which is a super school, and, and do away with our neighborhood school. I really don't think that's fair. I mean, I don't think you should be pitting a school against school. And there's portables all over Baldwin Park Elementary, there's portables all over Audubon. I just don't understand why we're even talking about closing a neighborhood school when we need capacity. We're already, we're gonna be doing more building in Baldwin Park. I just don't understand why we're doing that. We had the same discussion at Howard Middle School. They talked about closing that a couple of years ago, and it seems like I keep having to fight to have, to keep my neighborhood schools. And I don't understand why we can't open up the school choice or magnet programs to save the school. I will not support sales tax initiatives to build these K through 8 super schools to, to destroy our neighborhood schools. I don't think that's appropriate. Now, I do think, you know, I do think it was unfortunate that, that Paramore lost their school during the desegregation order. I think that was, I, I, I won't say, you know, whether that was good or bad. I think that it was in interest of getting the children better education. But again, I don't think that you destroy a community school at the behest of another one, and unfortunately, we donated the land for the Paramore K through 8. That's actually gonna destroy Fern Creek Elementary School. So again, I don't think a K through 8 warehouse school that's gonna displace Fern Creek is the appropriate thing to do. The concerned parents have not, they will, the school board will not even hear from these concerned parents. I think that's really unfair, that they won't even let the parents come in and talk, because that's how we actually saved Howard, by getting the magnet school put in place. It's also gonna impact our neighborhood center, our after-school program that we have there. We're not having any public input, and the parents will not, have not been put on the agenda. So I just don't think this is fair, and if this is unintended consequence of some of the other things, I think we should find a way to help Fern Creek stay open and keep our neighborhood school and not have District 4 have to, you know, it's like, at one point in time, it was unpopular to take the children, and we did that in, in our neighborhood school, and we lifted them up, and we supported them, we've educated them, we've given a wonderful after-school program, and it's an A school, and it's got national... program, and it's an A school, and it's got national recognition, and we're being punished for our good behavior in trying to support this wonderful neighborhood school. I think it's awful, and I think it's, it's something that we should not be supporting in any way, shape, or form at the city council level. I do think there should be a downtown school. I'm not saying that, but I don't think it should be, that we should be sacrificing one school for another, and I think that's really wrong. On the agenda today, on item A1, we have a citizen board appointment of Dick Bachelor to the Orlando Housing Authority, and I think that it's wonderful that we have Dick Bachelor serving on that because he actually grew up in Reeves Terrace. And here's a wonderful example of a community leader who actually came out of our affordable housing to, to really be a success. On item B6, the East to Relax Grill, we finally have a stable tenant in this facility, and they're gonna be expanding into the old Parks Office. I think this is a great use. And Yola House has really served the Parks Staff nicely, so I think that's just a win-win for everyone. And on item C18, I wanted to really applaud Planner Jim Burnett on a great infill housing project on a substandard lot. I don't get to see a lot of these. Usually when I say substandard lot, it's a mess. This is a really beautifully well-done project, and I want to congratulate him for doing a really good infill project. That's all I had. Thank you.
And we'll move to District 5, Commissioner Linum.
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't think this is an appropriate place to have the debate about the schools, but when I was elected in nineteen ninety-eight, one of my primary purposes was to get a school back in Paramore where it had to, and it had a sense of community. And when those kids were discharged from their homes and went to over ten different elementary schools, you're talking about devastation to a community. That was what you called devastation and discrimination and hatefulness going at the same time. I applaud the K through eight school that was the intention in nineteen ninety-eight when we did a Nat Forward Community School, the charter school. We did not want a charter school. Katie Adams did not want a charter school. Nat Forward didn't even discuss that. They didn't even know the name of charter school. I developed it into a charter school because that was the only school we could do to do all the great things we have since done in Paramore. And now, we have this opportunity to bring all those kids back. Hopefully, it will restore some sense of a whole community, as opposed, it's fragmented community at this point. But I think school issues, we're gonna take up with our school board, and I don't think by bringing those kids back home after being gone over forty years pits any school against another. What's good for one community doesn't necessarily be good for another, but it's good for the families that are there. And I have several schools in my district, and I will support the half penny tax because Ivy Lane is decayed in Moley. We need help. Rock Lake, where I live, one of the best schools, used to be in the whole county of Moley, all kind of bad problems out there. So, but I will talk with my school board members and staff about that. Now, on to what I planned to say for today was, we celebrated Mr. Wilbur Augustus Brown's Centennial on March 2nd, and I'm just so proud of him, and he still has his right mind. His thinking is better than mine. He is very consistent. No dementia, no Alzheimer's. Then we had the grand opening for the Winter Park Sunrail Station, or Train Station. You're talking about a beautiful day. It was. We've had the chance to, oh, and I have my passes already. I purchased them. You couldn't purchase them, but I was able to use the technology there to show how to get your, your passes and off of the train. And just, I feel like a mother giving birth, bringing Sunrail into town. This is a great thing for us. Also, I would like to acknowledge, talking about Sunrail, I see Steve. I drove with him. He's the lawyer for Metro Plans, sitting right over there. Came to my house, picked me up. Thank you, Steve. Next time you want to take me riding, I don't mind. And believe it or not, Mayor, guess what they did? He and Harry. They went there, driving Miss Daisy. I just could not believe it. Oh, my gosh. I just thought I was in the company of very sophisticated people until they started. So, but it was okay. Then on March 7th, we had a wonderful night here through the blueprint, Women of Distinction. Gennaro and his team are just phenomenal. Mayor Dyer and I had a chance to congratulate and present tokens to Dr. Lisa Barclay at University of Central Florida Medical School Dean, Dr. Barbara Jenkins, Orange County Public School Superintendent. What did she say? It's the tenth largest public school.
In the country.
In the country. So, one hundred eighty-seven thousand, I think it was. Dr. Felicia Williams, the President of the West Campus for Valencia. Dr. Depp, that's Lisa Barclay is not the dean. She is the doctor there doing our program at Jones High and some other things. It was Dr. Deborah German, who is the dean, who was one of the honorees. And our own Tuan Tre Lee, for her business savvy. I was so proud of Tuan and all the things that she has done. So, we had a great time. And in the future, we will, Mayor Dyer and the faith team will be blessed in DPAC and going on a tour. So, we thank all the DPAC people and all the staff who've made all this happen. Gennaro and each person has done something. I do want to correct something from this morning. I saw B6 as my no vote, but I was really five. It was pointing there, but I couldn't see it on my copy. So, my no vote stands for B5, and I have changed my no for B8 to a yes. I have had a discussion with Byron, Mayor, and understand the complexities. But when I looked at that agenda item, I knew two certified installers that we had used from Amway. So, that was my concern, like, people don't know who they, well, I know. If they don't know who to hire, call me. I know who to hire on every job we get. Okay? Thank you so much. I just want to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Okay. So, Alana, you got that change, B5 as a name?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Commissioner Ring, District 6.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to say congratulations to Paul Lewis on his twenty-five years of service, and I understand he's gonna be hanging around a little longer, which is great. Paul has really been a super person, specifically for a lot of the projects in District 6 and obviously throughout the entire city. But Dean, you forgot to mention that Paul Lewis was in a suit, and he looked very good, too. You know, 'cause I'm not used to seeing him in a suit, but he looked very good. Also, congratulations to Dick Bachelor on having been appointed to the Housing Authority Board, and Dick is a great community leader, and he continues to do all the, he can to help promote Orlando and the central Florida area. This past March 8th through the 12th, I was in Washington, DC with the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference, and the theme of the conference was Connect City Hall to Capitol Hill. And the NLC, National League of Cities, federal priorities, including supporting the marketplace fairness, investing in local transportation priorities, protect municipal bonds, fix the national immigration system, strengthen the nation's education pipeline, and support community resilience, especially those changes in our environment that have affected our cities as it relates with the weather. And also, the National League of Cities was concerned and very supportive of the Affordable Care Out, Care Rollout and the National Flood Insurance Program. I had an opportunity, too, to go with the National Black Caucus of local elected officials, of which I am the chaplain of the organization for Leadership on the Hill. And this was meeting with the Congressional Black Caucus. We met with some of the members of the Congressional Black Caucus, and Congressman Jim Clyburn was there to greet us and speak with us and encourage us. And that was a great, great outing there. And then, on March the thirty-first, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, I'm co-sponsoring with Beverly Neal and the National Congress of Black Women, the Orlando Chapter for Town Hall Meeting that will be held at the Dr. James R. Smith Center at seventeen-twenty-three Bruton Boulevard at its community room. There, we're gonna be talking about the Orange County Commissioners, or Commissions' concern in regards to the proposed charter amendment that would increase the number of county districts and also abolishing the tax collector. And we will be discussing what this process means to the Orange County voter, and so we have a lot of people that are concerned with what's going on there. And then, I had an opportunity to support the Affordable Care Act even further. President Barack Obama designated March twenty-first to twenty-third as Faith and Community Affordable Care Act Days of Action. And so, I organized the Faith Leadership Breakfast with a lot of our local pastors on Friday, March the fourteenth, and this was held at Mount Pleasant Missionary Baptist Church. U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, Dr. Pamela Rochelle, the Regional Director, and Stephanie Owens, the Senior Advisor, were our keynote speakers, and we also had a navigator there as well. Pastors, bishops, representatives of over thirty-five churches of District 6 attended this event on Friday, and they were informed and prepared to assist their congregation on enrolling into the Affordable Health Care. I would like to inform our residents who have questions about or need help enrolling in the Affordable Care Act, coverage plans that they can get online help from a licensed navigator on Tuesday, March eighteenth and twenty-fifth, from eight AM to two PM, and also from six PM to nine PM at the Dr. James R. Smith Center, the Dover Shores Community Center, Inglewood Neighborhood Center, Rosemont Community Center, and the Northwest Community Center. Appointments are suggested, and you can also dial two-one-one for the closest enrollment site within central Florida. And you can enroll twenty-four-seven by visiting healthcare.gov or calling the one-eight-hundred number three-one-eight-two-five-nine-six. And it will help if you would bring some items with you, social security numbers or document numbers for legal immigrants, and birth dates, pay stubs, W-2 forms, wage and tax statements, policy numbers for any current health insurance, and information about health insurance for you or your family. So, the open enrollment actually ends March thirty-first, and so, time is running out, and we still have opportunity to assist our people. Thank you, Mayor, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioners, a motion to-
Samu.
Okay. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ring, second by Commissioner Linum. On favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Without objection, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the CRA meeting. The first three items of business are meeting minutes. Is there a motion on the first? Okay. Motion, February tenth, meeting minutes. Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Stewart. On favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. The second is the January twenty-second Advisory Board Meeting Minutes. Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Stewart. On favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. Third is the CRA meeting minutes from February twenty-fourth. Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Stewart. On favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, Thomas, item number four, Lake Eola Improvements.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Mayor. And Commissioners, item number four was approving Lake Eola improvements. The City of Orlando's Parks and Recreation Department has applied to the Orange County Arts and Cultural Affairs Office for a facilities grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. The funds would be used toward the purchase of a new soundboard for the, the Lake Eola amphitheater sound, sound system. One of the conditions of the grant is a one-to-one financial match. The Parks and Recreation Department has approved putting up half of that match in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. The CRA Advisory Board recommends and staffs requesting that the CRA fund the other half of that matching grant in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Right. Samu, second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Linum. On favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay. At the last state of the downtown, we reflected on accomplishments in our downtown over the past decade. And in two thousand and three, we created the Downtown Strategic Plan, which was created by the Downtown Strategic Task Force, which was chaired by Kerry Coats, who is joining us here today. Thank you for being here, Kerry, and for your work back ten years ago. And that task force made a hundred and sixty-six recommendations, and we have carried out, or in the process of carrying out, a hundred and thirty-six of those. And I think this council, this downtown, the city's accomplished a lot. We've had a lot of transformational projects, everything from Sunrail, which will open in about six weeks, to the Amway Center, to residential construction, to the Forming Arts Center, the rebuild of the Citrus Bowl, so many of the built environment things. And it's time that we refocus on what the next ten years in the life of our city is going to be, and we are convening a new Downtown Orlando Task Force known as Project DTO, which will provide a, really a roadmap, but it's probably gonna be more quality of life issues and what should our city be and, or the downtown be, more than built environment things, I think, this time around. But I wanted, Thomas, to update you on Project DTO before we convene the group on April the-
Second.
April the second. And we have the task force leadership with us today, Fred Kittenger. Fred, would you raise your hand out there? Everybody knows you. And Brooke Myers and Phil Holt, who have agreed to use thousands of hours of their time over the next year. Just kidding. Some hours of their time to guide this group as we move forward. So, Thomas, could you tell us what we're gonna look forward to?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Project DTO advancing downtown is, as the mayor has indicated, is our new planning and visioning and strategic planning initiative, which will take place shortly. Today's overview starts, with the mayor just said, at the two thousand and three Strategic Transition Teams Report, because we pick up there with the overview, and we'll talk about the committees involved, what the deliverables will be from this, this initiative, as well as identify the leadership team, and of course, share the timeline. As the mayor has aptly stated, back in two thousand and three, the Downtown Strategic Transition Team was pulled together to, amongst other things, create and establish a safe, sustainable, livable, and vibrant city core, and of course, determine ways to develop a desirable destination and residential center in downtown Orlando. The results of those are many, you know them well. I don't have to, to repeat those. We talk about them all the time, but all of the various projects, many of which the mayor just mentioned to you. And in fact, since that time, the population of downtown Orlando has increased over twenty-eight percent. We've increased office space by more than eight hundred and twenty-five, eight hundred and thirty thousand square feet, and retail space in excess of two hundred and thirty thousand square, square feet. Mayor, we're, we're a little further than one-thirty-four. We're up to a hundred and forty-four now of the one sixty-six.
Yeah, I was telling us a little short there.
Just a little bit. A hundred and forty-four of the one hundred and sixty-six actions from the Transition Team Strategic Plan have now either been implemented or in process. But one of the things that we don't talk about a lot is the fact that that plan, and because it was designed by community leaders and stock, and stakeholders, excuse me, and was so universally accepted and embraced as the blueprint and a roadmap, if you will, for downtown, allowed like an incredible sense of consensus in downtown as to the importance of downtown Orlando continuing to be revitalized and redeveloped as the commercial core of not only the city of Orlando, but for all of central Florida. I think that the vibe in general, the buzz that that created, the enthusiasm, the momentum, the attitudes, the people that are involved with those stakeholders, and with that, that transition team that did that report, and, and all of the, the other stakeholders and how they brought into it, created a philosophy, really, that, that has given downtown Orlando an edge when we look at some of our neighboring downtowns and downtowns our size across the country. And we want to certainly underscore the importance of maintaining that edge, if you will, as we move into Project DTO. So, we want, we certainly want to, to imitate, if you will, or duplicate, I guess I should say, Mayor, the ultimate success of the plan from two thousand and three, because it was universally agreed upon and has been a roadmap that has been very, very successfully implemented. As the mayor indicated earlier, Project DTO advancing downtown is a visioning, marketing, as well as a planning process, which will position, a process which will look to focus positioning downtown as a progressive area, but one that encourages- positioning downtown as a progressive area, but one that encourages business development and that attracts a highly skilled and diverse workforce, and ultimately, with an objective of creating the nation's highest-quality urban environment. As the mayor said, Project DTO has several entities within it. One is a downtown DTO Task Force. That task force numbers some 74 persons. Again, Fred Kittinger of UCF chairs that, Brooke Myers of Emerge Real Estate is a vicechair, along with Philip Hope of Rochambeau, and lately of Split. The project would include a very diverse group of people. This 74 people are diverse, not only racially and ethnically, Mayor, but gender-wise, age-wise, background, orientation, lifestyle, even thinking styles, what they bring to the table. A very, very fresh mix of people, and we look for them to be very creative, innovative, and productive. The task force will break down into nine committees, and you see those committees named there, and we'll look at those in a little more detail. I won't take you through all of this, Mayor, but downtown identity, the mayor was talking about, less tangible things in the built environment will be a lot of the focus of this initiative. So, making downtown something for everyone, creating the unique experiences, branding, marketing, social media, economic competitiveness, embracing and supporting, sending the signal that we support entrepreneurship. We want to send that signal out nationally and internationally, that this is a place for entrepreneurs to come and be nurtured, and so, a committee will address that and how we can better do that. Increasing our business uses, diversifying the types of offices in downtown, always important. Access, all things mobility, of course, self-explanatory speaks for itself, urban lifestyle and tourism. Retail, always the number-one challenge in downtown. We have to continue to look at retail opportunity and to see how we can approve, improve on those, as well as entertainment uses for downtown. Sustainability, again, fairly self-explanatory, and urban amenities and open space, quality of the built environment will be looked at by this committee, along with parks, recreation, open spaces, and reviewing downtown design guidelines in general for the Appearance Review Board, as well as streetscape design guidelines as well. Our social fabric, strengthening the role and the synergy of faith-based, of the faith-based community in downtown. We're fortunate to retain major churches and religious institutions in downtown Orlando, and that's important. And so, making sure we nurture those, embracing those, and working along with them is important. So, this social fabric committee will address that. And as a part of that, families, the role that families, seniors, and the homeless play in our downtown is important. Neighborhoods and historic preservation, again, self-explanatory, talk everything from housing, housing types and new housing models, as well as housing, again, for seniors and the homeless. You hear a lot about permanent housing, permanent supportive housing for homeless as we move into the future. And finally, outs and cultural, again, self-explanatory, but addressing, Mayor, and council, everything from public art and murals to enlivening downtown with more non-traditional art forms such as busking and street art. In addition to the task forces, the mayor has indicated, Project DTO also includes an executive advisory committee, which will be comprised of 18 to 24 downtown Orlando leaders. These are people who have a proven track record of a commitment and a willingness and ability to lead and support downtown in its continued growth. As the mayor said, Kerry Coats, who I think is uniquely qualified, having chaired the strategic team back in 2003, is uniquely qualified to chair this high-level group who will provide strategic input and analysis of the product coming forth from the committees of the task force. Are the deliverables coming to us as a result of this initiative, or three tangible overall deliverables? The first is the DTO Vision Plan, which will describe various concepts and several distinct themes, which will come as a result of the work of the committees from the task force coming through with innovative and creative productions of themselves. Secondly, there is a DTO Marketing Strategy. This is an overall roadmap, if you will, to communicating and promoting the vision that the plan proposes and puts forth, and ultimately recommending. Further ways to enhance downtown Orlando's brand and livability, one of the components of that will be a short video. And finally, but certainly not least of all, you recall that we're going to perform a comprehensive rewrite of the downtown Orlando Community Redevelopment Area Plan. This statutory required plan has not been comprehensively rewritten since 2000, since the year 2000. And so, this gives us an opportunity to not only update that, but to synchronize it with our vision and the strategy for implementing that venture, making that all one synchronized plan very, very effective. From a leadership team standpoint and in chart, obviously, the City of Orlando, you sit atop, as you do all of the City of Orlando's and the CRA's functions, along with the CRA Advisory Board here. We've already talked about the Executive Advisory Committee, there's a task force. There's also a steering committee, which will be, which is comprised of all of the chairs of the Executive Advisory Committee, as well as the task force, lead members of the consulting team, as well as staff leads that you see there, and the project manager and project coordinator for staff. At the bottom of this graphic, you see the nine committees and the chairs of those committees. And what you do not see is that at least two, if not more, staff people with expertise and understanding in the relevant content and subject matter of each committee will serve as support for those committees throughout the duration. And of course, as you can see there, between the chair of the task force and the two vicechairs, the three of them are serving on three each, serving as liaisons with three each of these nine committees. And of course, the consultant team will be supporting all of the committees as well. Finally, the timeline, as the mayor indicated, April 2nd is our orientation right here in this room. Yes, you are invited, and we encourage you to attend, along with the DDB and CRA Advisory Board members, all the task force members, all the Executive Advisory Committee members. About 25 or 30 staff members right now have been enlisted to support this effort, as well as the consultants that will be working on this project. So, a fairly large group of people expected to be here at 9:30 a.m. on April 2nd, as we do the official orientation, which will be kicked off by our mayor. You see some additional components of the timeline there. The first meeting, first of five meetings expected to be held by the Executive Advisory Committee will be held on April 21st. The first working task force meeting is scheduled for April 11th. And then, you see the final deliverables, the vision plan itself, we're expecting to come in mid-October of this year, with the marketing and communication plans, as well as the comprehensively rewritten redevelopment plan coming in March of next year. And Mayor, unless there are any questions, that's all I have.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Sheehan?
Yeah. Thomas, when I was originally approached, I think, by Walter about, you know, possible people to serve on this, I did not know historic preservation was going to be brought up, and I do have some concerns, because we haven't had a very good record on historic preservation of late. And I would have made more appointments based on that concern, because I had no idea, because it seems like historic preservation is always continually on the chopping block, even though historic preservation has made, Lake Eola Heights is one of the most desirable neighborhoods in downtown Orlando. So, and it is in the CRA. So, my concern is that, you know, Terry's a great guy, he lives in one of the historic districts, which I think is great, but I do have some concerns that we have enough people that have an expertise in historic preservation that can actually address that issue, especially with our bad track record on historic preservation.
Understood. We expect that the 74 people will break down fairly equitably into the nine committees, which should mean that we will have approximately eight volunteers in each committee. I'm happy to get with you, Commissioner, one-on-one, and talk through who those people are. We don't know yet who those eight people are. We will be sending out an e-blast tomorrow to all of the task force candidates, and it will include a survey, which will ask them to prioritize their top three committees that they would like to be in. And of course, we will process that information and have the results of that ready for the April 2nd orientation meeting, where we can then identify which people will be on which committee. Obviously, all of you, of course, recall that the mayor did make available to each, as you said, to each commissioner, an appointment to the task force, and we did honor your requests. But I'm happy to get with you, one-on-one, once we see more who's going to be in that task force, I mean, in that task force committee, to make sure that we're addressing your concerns. I would add that the task force committee meetings, as will the task force meetings themselves, will all be, and Executive Advisory Committee, will all be subject to sunshine, laws, and procedures and processes and regulations, so, and protocol. And so, they will all be open meetings. So, I want to make sure, I stress that, I don't think I said-
Okay. And like I say, my concern is that, you know, we've torn a lot of stuff down that I don't think we should have, you know, we, progress is great, but I don't think we have to do it at the, you know, expense of our history.
Sure.
And we've done some really good things that have stabilized these downtown neighborhoods, specifically through that plan.
Sure.
And I want to make sure that that work continues. And like I say, I would have made different appointments had I known that historic preservation was going to be on there, because I would, that would have been an important, you know, leg of it for me. I just thought it was like downtown hours and stuff like that. I didn't realize that was going to be a component of it.
Okay. All right. I'll get with you later on.
Okay. Thank you, Thomas.
Commissioner Linum?
Mayor and council, and thanks, Thomas, for bringing that to us today. Over the past 16 years, we have really worked to give our downtown some character and bring in more and more residents downtown. But the, and all the hard work is paying off, except there is this conflict between people moving downtown and adjusting to downtown. So, wherever we're going, we have got to have someone to help communicate, when you move downtown, there's certain things that are already here. It's like people moving near the airport, then complain about the noise, the airplanes, you know? We had two years ago, literally come in here and put certain restrictions in their deeds to say, hey, you're moving near the airport, don't come down here complaining about the noise. But I think sometimes, you know, most folks have a legitimate concern, they say, well, I got to get up and go to work. There's noise, there's people. But those are the very things we wanted to bring downtown.
Absolutely.
So, I like for us to look at how are we going to communicate to downtown residents what downtown is, and how do we make it compatible for our residents and for our merchants? It's a real, I get emails all the time, and they think I don't care. Of course I care. I worked hard to get all these buildings down here and to bring them here. But we, we've got to do something about where we're going on this. How do we get there? Do we get the buildings to do better in terms of soundproofing? Maybe that's the issue, if they threw up cheap stuff or whatever, I don't know. You live in one, do you hear all the noise? I don't know. But I'm just, okay. I live near the stadium, I hear everything. But the stadium was there before I built my house there. So, it sounds kind of stupid to me to start complaining about it when I moved within a few blocks of the stadium. But I do think we have to, and look into the future, how do we make all of this compatible? And how do we move forward? Everything is leaning forward to make it work together and to improve it still and to increase. I believe there's space for increase, and I see permits coming through and other things going to happen. So, maybe, Mayor and council, we may need to look at our codes and stuff like that in construction to make sure these buildings have sufficient soundproofing or some kind of element to protect its residents from being overwhelmed by this new downtown.
And Commissioner, all the commissioners, I know the task force will welcome any input that you have as we move this process forward. So, Fred, maybe we can make some opportunities available for individual subcommittees or the committee as a whole to hear from commissioners.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Thomas.
Commissioner Stewart?
Let me follow along the same thought, Mayor. Thomas, as you get the commissions, as the committees begin to move forward, if you can alert us as to when their meetings are, or at least when they're scheduled to be. Because I know that I've got some people interested, especially in the homeless issue and those kind of things, that would love to have some input on some of those topics. And my opinion is, they ought to take the initiative to come, and they ought to be involved, and if they don't, you know, I feel a little bit like some of us up on here, if they don't want to take the energy to come get involved, don't come yelling at me about it. But I do think there's some core people that, you know, that have a stake, doesn't represent everybody, but they ought to get a chance just to share their opinion, because I think this is one of those occasions where the more input we get, the better the product will be.
Absolutely.
So, I know that we've done a lot of things along the venues of getting reports back to us, and if we don't get it out, then it's our fault. But if we can get the information, then I think it'd be a good connection to the rest of the community.
Commissioner, we'll endeavor to absolutely get a complete schedule of all of the meetings and the task force meetings, Executive Advisory Committee meetings, as well as all of the committee meetings, which have not yet been determined to the commissioners. And as, because of sunshine, it will all be in public places, accessible to the public.
I would imagine, as a matter of policy, that you'll probably end up communicating those to the entire committee. If you copied us on that, that may be just adequate to do what we were looking for.
We're happy to do that.
Yeah. I just don't want somebody to have to go to public meetings and get something, you know, 48 to 72 hours in advance to be able to get to a meeting to attend. There may be some things that we can do to help provide a little bit more open process.
Understood. We'd be happy to do that.
As those schedules go out, just copy us. I think it'd probably be an easy thing to do, and not have to do something special for us.
Okay. Duly noted.
All right. Fred, Brooke, Phil, Kerry, thank you in advance for your service for the next year. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Any further business come before the CRA? And we will be adjourned, and we will convene the Neighborhood Improvement District Board of Directors. All we have is accepting meeting minutes. Is there a motion to accept the meeting minutes from February 19th?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ing, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We will adjourn the Neighborhood Improvement District meeting, reconvene the City Council meeting. Brings us to hearings, ordinances, second read, number one, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate certain real property generally located north of the Osceola County boundary, south of Claps Simmons Sims, Duda Road, east of Narcusi Road, and west of the Split Oak Forest, and comprised of 211 acres, more or less, as urban village in part and conservation in part, on the city's official future landuse maps, establishing a new sub-area policy for the same property to provide a maximum development program and required land development regulations, providing for severability, correction of scribners' errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt, second. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, vacating, closing, and abandoning Guava Street, generally located between McCray Avenue and Sanitarium Avenue, providing for severability, correction of scribners' errors, and an effective date.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the future landuse map designation for part of land generally located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Broadway Avenue and Ridgewood Street, and comprised of .3 acres of land, more or less, from office medium intensity to residential medium intensity, amending the zoning designation for the same land from O2THP in part to R2BTHP in part, and from the O2THP in part to O2T in part, providing for severability, correction of scribners' errors, and an effective date.
Some of second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Ordnance, first read, number one, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending and restating the planned development zoning district regulations for the Orlando Health Plan Development on property generally located north of Kaylee Street, south of Gore Street, east of Atlanta Avenue, and west of Orange Avenue, and comprised of 65 acres, more or less, rezoning certain land within the Orlando Health Development from PDT to O2TSP in part, and MU1TSP in part, and rezoning other certain land within the planning area from various straight zoning districts to PDT in part and PDTAN in part, providing for amendment of the city's official zoning maps, severability, correction of scribners' errors, and an effective date.
Some of second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's adopted growth management plan by amending the city's future landuse map designation, assigning residential low intensity to certain real property generally located north of Delridge Avenue, south of Webster Avenue, and west of Neptune Drive, and addressed as 1148 Webster Avenue, comprised of .226 acres, more or less, assigning the initial zoning classification R1AA/W in part, and R1AA/W/RP in part, for the same real property. part, and R1AA/W/RP in part for the same real property, directing amendment of the city's official future land use and zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of scribners' errors, and an effective date.
So move, second. Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there any public testimony? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. I'd like to acknowledge that Kyle is back with us. Hope you're feeling better, Kyle.
Yeah, Kyle.
Good to see your bright smile.
Yeah.
Looks like you've lost a little weight. That doesn't appear to be the best way to go about it, but glad you're back with us.
No general appearances.
Okay, we have no general appearances, so that will conclude our meeting for today. Happy Shamrock Day.
Hey. Do we vote on confirmation only? I'm only kidding.